All right, welcome everyone. So the Board of Education meeting is called to order. If you would, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Again, welcome everyone. Thank you for being here. Colleagues, welcome. Nice to see you. Secretary Johnson, could you please take role?
All members are present except for Member Torres and Member Donahue.
Excellent. Colleagues, moving on now to the approval of the agenda this evening. Unless there are objections, the agenda will be approved as printed. Okay, very good. We're now going to turn to public comments on action items. So for folks out in the public, these are things that we will be voting on this evening. I do not have any green cards in front of me, but is there anyone who would like to address the board tonight on items that we will be voting on? Okay, excellent. Thank you. Colleagues, moving on now to our consent agenda. Colleagues, unless there are objections, the consent agenda is approved as presented. Okay, very good. We're now going to move on to our information items, colleagues. We've got a really exciting lineup here. We're going to turn it over first to Assistant Superintendent Eldridge and company for a little preview or a little review, rather, of our summer programs.
Good evening. We have had another very successful summer this year with our summer programming for students of all ages. We are here tonight to share a little bit about that. We've had the Summer of STEAM again. We had the Camp WSD and of course, the Summer Academy for our middle schoolers and high school students as well. So I am going to turn it over today to our wonderful crew of guests, Elizabeth Cucci, Chris Saporin, Lauren Wiseman, Jessica Ristich, and of course, Kristin Woods-Helms. So I am going to hand it over to them and let them share all the exciting info.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. We are here, as Lisa shared, to celebrate all of the summer learning that happened this summer through all of our different programs. So the first one we're going to highlight is our ever-popular Summer of STEAM. So this year, during Summer of STEAM, we had 11 different camp offerings. We had two weeks of camp that were in-person and one week of camp which was virtual. We had over those weeks 172 participants. Nine of our own teachers, our high school robotics coach, and three WSD support staff ran these programs. We offered half-day, full-day. This year, we also added a new element, four-days-a-week camp. Because what we were noticing last year and kind of a trend is that by Friday, some people were going on vacation and they were signing up for the five-day camp, but then they weren't there on Friday for the last celebration day. So we offered some four-week camps, which all sold out this year. So we will continue that offering. And we again offered our full-week camps. Each person in camp received a Chromebook backpack, a t-shirt, and/or a water bottle. And how we worked that was if it was your first week at camp, you received a Chromebook backpack. If you came back the second week, you got a t-shirt. And if you came back a third week, you got a water bottle. So we kept track on what kids were getting. So every student at least walked out with a Chromebook backpack. Each virtual camper also received a backpack full of supplies so that they can innovate and design and build from home via the virtual platform. So how that worked was all of June, because the virtual camp was in July, the parents could come to Crary and pick up their students' backpack during the workdays, and then they had those supplies in hand so they could do the projects and challenges virtually. All of our events were at Riverside. Camps included again a breakfast and lunch courtesy of our District Food Service Department with the Meetup/Eatup program. And childcare again was offered onsite. We know by marrying all of these programs together onsite, that really drives how this works. Our students this year had so much fun. We actually had quite a few who wanted to come on Saturday and Sunday, or wanted to come back the following week, and if we had openings, their parents re-enrolled them. The tricky piece is always, as you guys know, is these programs fill up fast. So we do start enrollment typically in March, and usually by June, we're almost full. So we try to always keep adding more and more offerings as much as we can. So this year, of course, we had our robotics, we had our VEX Go. We also had art, STEAM, math, you name it, we had it. And it was just such a joy to have the kids participate this year. Next on our agenda, we're going to share about Camp WSD.
Hello. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to share about the 2023 summer session of Camp WSD. We wanted to start by sharing some numbers. Let's see if I can get this to work. Some numbers, some Camp WSD numbers to show how this program has continued to expand to provide support to as many students as possible. This summer, we were able to increase Camp WSD enrollment to serve 331 students, improve our attendance rates in a variety of ways, increase the number of instructional hours provided to students, and expand the grades we were serving to include fall 6th graders.
So during Camp WSD, we leveraged all of our Waterford School District investments to accelerate learning and enhance that summer school experience. Right after breakfast every day, students utilized Dreambox to practice math at their individual level and pace. Next, every class moved into a class meeting. For our class meetings, we use social-emotional learning lessons from our HMH inter-reading curriculum. The lessons included topics such as positive self-talk, teamwork, and how to be a problem solver. Every day, students also participated in a STEM and math block. During STEM, students created and played their own board games. They designed safe carriages to drop eggs from the top of recess equipment. They built and controlled robots, and many, many more amazing things. This year, we enhanced the math portion of our Camp WSD by teaming up with Devin McKee, our wonderful K-8 math and science consultant, using district math data to determine the greatest area of need. She wrote 15 days' worth of number sense math instruction lessons for every grade level. Each day included a number talk, an explicit lesson on a strategy that was related to number sense, and practice through playing math games with partners. During literacy acceleration, students rotated through all of our digital platforms related to literacy. This time was also used for literacy acceleration teams and our English Language Development Accelerationist to meet with small groups of students for 30-minute intensive language and literacy lessons. And when not meeting with small groups, our Camp WSD English Language Development Consultant pushed into 4th and 6th grade English learner cluster classes to support and co-teach in Engaging our Camp WSD students and their families is one of our highest priorities. Over the last three years, we have grown our initiatives to support strong daily attendance and engagement, as well as to provide growth and equity-minded services. We'd like to take a few minutes to thank those who have helped us meet our student and family engagement goals. First and foremost, thank you to our Camp WSD families for saying yes to this summer opportunity to accelerate their child's learning. Thank you to Michael Williams and his food service team for making our vision of a trickle-in breakfast for 331 students become a reality, and for providing nutritious meals a day for our students. Thank you to Tammy Leighton and her transportation team for safely driving our Camp WSD students to and from camp each day, and for offering a large selection of bus stops for families to choose from. These bus stop selections allowed many of our families to send their children to camp this summer when they were unable to provide them with transportation to and from Riverside. Thank you to Jim Beaver and Mallory Roback for ensuring our Camp WSD staff was properly trained for each and every student with a plan of care. This training was put into action a handful of times during our three weeks of camp, and each and every time, our staff responded with confidence and competence. Thank you to the Data Team Center for setting us up with a Camp WSD Blackboard Connect group, as this allowed us to efficiently communicate with families, sending them weekly updates and newsletters. Thank you to Mary Creighton, the Optimist Club of Waterford, for the generous donation of 80 Dairy Queen gift cards that were raffled off each week to students who had strong attendance and engagement. Thank you to the Waterford Foundation and the Mary Lou Simmons Endowment for their continued support and generosity, providing student lanyards, spirit sticks for each student to earn and wear proudly, as well as a Camp WSD t-shirt for every staff and student at Camp WSD. And finally, thank you to the additional district support teams from Maintenance and Operations, Childcare and Computer Services, as well as Riverside for lending us their home.
To wrap up our 2023 Camp WSD highlights tonight, we wanted to share a few key achievement metrics. Connected to leveraging our investments, as we shared earlier, we wanted to highlight Lexia Core 5 and Power Up Student Usage Minutes and Units Gained. As students completed units on either program, they made progress toward or through their personalized literacy skill trajectories to accelerate their skills before their new grade in the fall. Students were able to complete many new lessons on Dreambox this summer to accelerate their math skills and engage in the program prior fall. We were excited about the percentage of students who were able to meet or exceed their weekly lesson targets during Camp WSD. Our AMIRA data point represents student achievement when comparing data from the AMIRA Benchmark Assessment given in the spring to the Benchmark Assessment given during the last week of Camp WSD. We are excited to share that 41% of our students who attended Camp WSD showed improvement in their AMIRA ARMS score or ORF data. Thank you so much for your ongoing support, and we are excited to start our Camp WSD 2024 planning.
It is my pleasure to share points of pride from the middle school and high school summer academies. For the middle school summer academy, the program was fully virtual and online and ran from Monday, June 19th through Thursday, July 27th. For staffing, we had four teacher mentors, two for language arts, two for math, and one academy director. Thank you very much, Chris. There were 80 participants total in grades 5 through 8, and the academic focal points were language arts, Power Up, and math via Dreambox. We are happy to share that the Power Up usage data showed that 4,304 units were completed for Power Up, and for Dreambox, 1,363 lessons. Every week, parents and guardians received a communication entitled "News You Can Use", which highlighted pertinent summer academy information and general reminders. We also acknowledged students who met individual platform usage goals and/or who demonstrated academic growth within Power Up and Dreambox. Devin was one of our teacher mentors for math and also created a Dreambox student survey, so students had an opportunity to share their thoughts on Dreambox as compared to the previous program Success Maker. For high school, it was a hybrid format in that students can choose to either work from home, online, or in-person at Waterford Durant High School. The duration was the same as middle school, Monday, June 19th through Thursday, July 27th. There were seven teacher mentors onsite, one for language arts, two for math, one for science, two for social studies, and one floater, in addition to our ESL paraprofessional Yami Ro, who supports Durant during the school year, a school safety coordinator and academy director, Jen Jurgler. The participants were students in grades 9 through 12, and they completed 200 credit recovery courses and 36 new credit courses. The academic platforms were Imagine Learning for Credit Recovery, with the fee being $40 per course, and Imagine Learning for New Credit at $175 per course. Parents and guardians were provided with weekly progress reports, and students got a stream of communication from their teachers to ensure that they were reaching their targets on a weekly basis. So we thank you for your support. I thank the folks behind me who have supported me throughout the summer program, central office administration. We appreciate it. Thank you.
So again, we just express our thank you, and a thank you to all the parents and the students who took part in all of these programs, and we look forward to next summer. Thanks so much.
Colleagues, what comments or questions do we have? Member Wagner.
I do think, I do think there was one group that didn't get a thank you, and that's all of you, because all of this couldn't have happened without all of you, and it was your vision. And look at how amazing it's become. I mean, the last few years have been so fun to see these updates, so thank you to all of you, to you too as well. Like, we couldn't do this without you, so you're amazing. Don't forget to, you know, pat yourselves on the back sometimes, too.
Colleagues, other comments or questions? Member Sutherland.
I, oh, remember Wagner's comments, and I, as I saw all of you standing up there interviewing as well, I was like, I should just turn the lights off, because there's so much brilliance right there. You guys are truly, your dedication to our students, and the extent that you go to reach them and find them where they're at and help them fulfill their potential, it is extraordinary. And we thank you for that incredible dedication to our, I think probably some of our most vulnerable, so thank you for that. And I just had a quick question about this exact slide. I'm not sure if you can maybe, how many students, so we had 200 credit recovery courses, completed 36 new credit, how many students actually participated in the high school email? Just curious how many that represents for us.
I could speak to new credit. So new credit, we had 36 students who took part in new credit and 36 students who successfully completed new credit.
36 different kids?
Different students, yeah. And then for credit recovery, we'd have to look up the exact number, but we're well, I want to say at least 170, 180 within that ballpark range, but we'd have to look at for sure.
We need to be the exact. So I was just kind of curious whether it was kind of a one-to-one, like whether students were essentially taking one course and completing one course for credit recovery.
For new credit, that is typically the case. So a new credit, essentially, a student in six weeks' time is trying to take a full course, and it's brand-new, they can't test out of any areas. Credit recovery is a little different. So they're really just trying to make up that credit that they didn't earn previously. So those courses kind of adjust based on where the student, they kind of take a placement test at the beginning, but we can get you that information, because that one's not necessarily.
It's sort of about 180. So we had a couple of kids that did more than one course.
Yes.
It's not like, yes. Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Maybe it's just for the folks who are following along at home, I'm wondering if you could sort of explain to us what units are, because to see 8,631 and what units sort of correspond to, because that's some significant work.
On our, on our platform, so if we're talking about our Lexia programs, Power Up and Lexia Core 5, units really are the activities that the students complete, and the activities are contained within a level. So the, you know, the program has a number of levels that encompass the scope and sequence of, you know, whichever program it is, either K-5 or K-8, as Power Up does. And then, so as students are completing units, they're making progress on the program, and they're moving themselves along in the scope and sequence that they are working within. And then, you know, on Dreambox, lessons, they're completing lessons, and that's also moving them along. Did that help?
Yes, very much so, because, I mean, to see these numbers here, in Camp WSD, we had our students complete 8,631 lessons on Lexia Core 5, and in Dreambox, 8,211. I mean, those are sound numbers.
We will thank you again for purchasing Dreambox, because it was just a very different experience for students this summer. They were so engaged from, you know, the beginning, from starting, you know, on the first day with Dreambox and just loved it. And I think that's, you know, that just came right into the new school year. For the, for any of the students that hadn't had a chance, it seems like that is, that momentum is really building around Dreambox, so thank you.
I think what's really interesting, because I remember we had these conversations around Lexia and Dreambox and AMIRA, and I think we were, as a board and maybe as a team up here, talking about that in terms of the academic year. So to see how these things are paying out and paying off in the summer, I mean, if we've already had three summers and another three summers, I mean, that is, we seem, those investments are paying off, and we seem to really be squeezing our monies out of, money's worth out of those materials, so thank you, thank you, thank you. Exciting and exceptional stuff. Colleagues, any other comments, questions? Thank you so much. We love seeing you. Thank you for being here, for all your hard work. Well, let's now turn it over, colleagues, to Superintendent Lindberg for a back-to-school video.
Well, in keeping with the theme of the momentum of learning and how that's growing, and we're in our fourth week of school already, but we would like to show you and our community our back-to-school video and how that excitement and momentum carried on from the first day and continues to today.
Colleagues, any comments or questions about our really amazing back-to-school video? Member Sutherland.
Not so much a question, so much as a heartfelt gratitude. That is, I probably, I love all the videos that Jane and Sarah, I know your group, works on, but that one, when you see the families and the sweet little ones, and even the older kids, I mean, not even, and the older kids back at school, and big smiles and the school buses, and it just reminds you of why we're all here. And it just was, that was really a really beautiful, emotional video to see, so thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. All right. Turn it back over to Assistant Superintendent Eldridge to talk a lot about, a little bit about our testing data from M-Step, and colleagues, we have a slide up here.
All right. Well, good evening again. I joined here with Elizabeth Cucci, Darren Holly, Yvonne Dixon, and of course, Nadine Mylstand, who is here to answer questions, if you have any, as we go through. Today's data is going to be based on the M-Step from last spring. You may recall that the state of Michigan embargoes that data for us, and unfortunately, it does seem to take a long time before it's available to us and we're allowed to share it with you. So we got the okay a couple of weeks ago and received all of our information. And you may recall that M-Step is from 3rd grade basically through 11th grade, but at different grades, they test different things. So the basic M-Step test runs from 3rd grade to 17th grade, and then the PSAT is given at 8th grade, and then the SAT is given at 11th grade. And pieces of those are part of the M-Step program. Additionally, there's a science and social studies test that are given at various grades for that. And so tonight, we're here to present to you our data from the M-Step from last spring. And what you're going to notice is that it very much is reflective of the NWA data we presented to you last spring, which was given just before this window of testing opened. So you're going to see a lot of similarities. We have seen and noticed that where we were starting to show growth in NWA, we are showing growth in M-Step as well. Where we knew we still had things to work on and we were just getting into adapting some new curriculum, we see that those areas are reflected in these scores as well. And so no surprises really for us here. So we're going to move forward and share with you, and Elizabeth is going to start us off by giving us some background.
So we just kind of wanted to give a little bit of a synopsis about what the purpose and why the spring assessment data. So state assessments are summative assessments designed to be a snapshot in time of a student's performance. State assessments are one part in a balanced assessment system that uses multiple and varied assessments to provide all users with information they need to support teaching and learning. And as you know, like Lisa shared, we use NWA as one of those points of a balanced system. State assessments help policymakers and decision-makers understand overall levels of achievement and identify schools, groups, and/or students for support. State assessments are not designed to be diagnostic. State Assessments are not designed to be diagnostic or drive day-to-day teaching and learning. It's kind of nice to always bring up that reminder each year because we only give these assessments once a year. The next piece that we wanted to look at is just a reminder of how State Assessments have looked over the last four years, especially in the COVID timeframe. So as we know, in the spring of 2020, we did not give assessments because we were not in person for that period. Then in the spring of '21, participation was not required, so you know that data, as we talked about and showed, is kind of all over the place. Some kids were in, some kids were not, so that's not very valuable to us. However, in spring of 2022, last year, State Assessments were again required and again, or two years ago, sorry. And then, spring of 2023, they're again once required. So you're going to notice reflective in this data, we're looking at two data points, the spring of '22 and the spring of 2023. And I am going to turn it over to Darren to look at M-Step data.
Okay, and we'll, we'll go through each grade level with math, language arts, science, and social studies. And the good news is, the first slide shows our third-grade language arts proficient, and this shows the percent proficient or above in each of our buildings between, and it also shows a trend between year 2022 and 2023.
Can I just remind everyone that the levels for M-Step are not proficient, partially proficient, proficient, and above proficiency. So when we look at those two data points, above and at, that's what the state looks at as well. So we are, we are using the information that the state uses to get these numbers. So it's two, two categories that we're counting.
Thank you. So, yeah, like Lisa said, there is another category where some of those students actually show proficiency, that partial proficiency. So we like to see, you know, on the back end, we like to see how many kids have moved out of that not proficient into that level and then vice versa, from that partially proficient into proficient, so. But for a third grade at or above proficiency, you'll see that six of our nine buildings showed an increase from last year to this year, and four of our buildings beat the state. Our district as an average went up, so that's, and again, that matches what we saw in NWA. And although I think I told you when we were sharing our NWA data that we didn't necessarily expect to see things in M-Step yet, we're glad to see that it is showing up in M-Step, so. Go to the next slide. Next is third-grade math, percent proficient or above. And again, six of our nine buildings and including the district are above, or showed an increase from last year to this year. And Schoolcraft beat the state this year. Fourth grade, language arts. Fourth grade, we, this is an interesting group because we saw, and we saw this in NWA as well. Four of the nine buildings showed an increase from last year and the district stayed the same. State went up a titch and four of our buildings beat the state and one tied. Fourth grade math, six of the nine buildings showed an increase from last year. District as a whole increased, state went up a little, and we had two of our buildings beating the state at fourth grade. We'll go to fifth grade. This actually was a little surprising. We had seven of our nine buildings show an increase from last year and five of our buildings beat the district, and including the district, beat the state average on this. And we haven't seen that in some time, so we're very happy to see that and encouraged to see that move forward. Fifth grade math, six of our nine buildings increased from last year and the district went up as well, and three beat the state. Sixth grade, like Lisa mentioned, you know, we, we know that middle school is an area of, of need and we have begun to invest in not only the ELA program but math as well. And we included Dreambox this year as well and Power Up for all students. So we recognize that as a need. Very early last year, piloted math, so math will be implemented this year, first year. Dreambox implementation, I think Chris mentioned that, our middle schools have really taken on to Dreambox and, and we're really hoping that that's going to make a good impact alongside of the new curriculum there. And with Lexia Power Up, we are, we are hoping to see that also impact that with our second full year of implementation of Into Literature. So math, again, these are, state's doesn't look great, but we're not, we're not where we want to be in math in sixth grade. Seventh grade language arts, nation showed an increase, but the rest declined a little bit, state declined as well. Seventh grade math, again, area of need, and we will continue to see, we are hoping that we're going to be seeing the, the fruits of some of these new investments, not only in our NWA leading up to M-Step, but also on M-Step as well this year. Our subgroups, for ELA, third through seventh grade, overall, we're seeing that our new programs are having a, an effect on our subgroup data and in math as well. They either stayed the same for the most part or increased. And we know that a lot of our programs now have very specific and intentional supports for our ELD learners and they are, they have more engaging text, so we're hoping to see that increase over time as well. Science? Science, we, just as a reminder, oh?
It's me.
Oh, you're science.
I mean, you're welcome to it. So science is one of those grade levels that's a little bit unique. The state only assesses science in three grade levels, fifth, eighth, and 11th grade, and it's the same for social studies. So the factor is, and the reality is, especially for our fifth and eighth graders, that means they're taking two additional tests on top of ELA and math compared to our other grades. So when we look at this data, we're looking again at 2022 and 2023. We see that there is an increase across the board at eighth and fifth grade, and that is true for the state level as well as the fifth grade level. And then 11th grade stayed that plateau. So we're seeing those increases, again, the scores are not where we want, but continuous improvement and moving forward, our goal is to see those increase. So the same type of thing for social studies, again, only that fifth, eighth, and 11th grade. We see an increase at fifth and eighth grade, and in 11th grade, we're seeing that decrease and the state is staying the same. So again, across the board, even at the state level, not obviously where we want to be, but through the improvement, we, our goal is to improve.
So in summary, again, there, there is, there's certainly room for work, but there is a lot of encouragement that we're seeing. So at the, at the elementary level, the majority of our schools demonstrated, demonstrated growth in both ELA and math. Many of our schools at multiple grade levels met or exceeded the state in both ELA and math. And overall, was I not supposed to do this one?
No, you are. No.
Just checking. Okay, so overall, our science and social studies showed growth from the previous year. And as we discussed last year, these scores mirror NWA for middle school. And we're seeing solid results in ELA and math at the elementary level due to a lot of these investments and hard work that it's been to roll out these programs. And we are confident that by the investments that we have made in the middle school, that we are going to see, be seeing those increases as well.
I just want to add as well, the piece that's really important in my eyes to this is that the NWA scores are mirroring our M-Step scores. When we first started investigating NWA, we did that with the intention of having it be a more detailed assessment that would give us what we need instructionally to help move us forward towards better scores on the M-Step. So the fact that they are aligned is very encouraging to us because it means that when we implement the NWA program in terms of pulling out where we need to, what standards we need to work on and, and setting goals for kids, that is getting us towards doing better on the M-Step now that we have materials that support that as well. So we have all three pieces in place, so that, that's why that's significant and we keep bringing that up.
Good evening. I will be bringing to you information regarding the College Board suite of assessments. And College Board actually starts with their eighth-grade PSAT assessment and goes through the SAT in the 11th grade. The scoring that you see is actually based on a benchmark that has been established by College Board to forecast whether or not students will be college and career-ready. So when you, when you take a look at what we're presenting on this particular assessment, the College Board has identified a certain level that students need to perform at, at eighth grade in order to put them on a trajectory to be able to be college and career-ready when they exit high school. So the assessment that you're looking at, we are describing it as language arts, but on a score report, you would see evidence-based reading and writing or ERW on this actual score report. And I'm pleased to point out at the end of middle school, eighth grade, we see on the language arts assessment that both middle schools are showing growth from last year to this year on this particular test. The evidence-based reading and writing test has reading, writing, and, and language that's being assessed. So this is a very positive indicator of how our new materials are starting to show impact for our students in the eighth grade. And here for math, as Ms. Eldridge explained earlier, we were implementing pilots last year in mathematics and we have selected a mathematics program that is in alignment with the new materials that we have, K5. So now we'll have similar programming, we'll show continuity for our students. So we're very hopeful that this is just the beginning. As you can see, peers demonstrated growth last year from the prior year in mathematics, so we're hopeful that we'll see this continue for both schools in the future. And this is very encouraging to take a look at what we're seeing already in English language, language arts for our subgroups. Again, our new materials that we have through the HMH Language Arts Into Literature Program has a lot of opportunities for teachers to provide intervention and differentiation for our students, and we're already starting to see growth for our subgroups from the use of those materials. We are seeing some growth from, in math with our English learners as well, so we're hopeful to see as we get our new materials in place in middle school that we will also see this for our PSAT 8 in math. So on to the SAT in 11th grade. We are definitely seeing some positive things here. Kettering has exhibited some, some growth here. I think that's quite substantial to see a 5% increase in one year. We are putting some things in place in the high school to help teachers see some incremental growth. We now have the NWA assessment back in high school, grades nine through 11, so teachers don't have to wait for a once-a-year assessment to get feedback, how their students are doing. Teachers will, have already given the NWA assessment and they're getting feedback already. They'll see how their students are performing and the reports that we get from NWA will provide valuable information so they can provide targeted instruction to their students in the classroom. So we're really looking forward to seeing some great teaching taking place and evidence and, and learning. And here, okay, here we go for math. And again, we see growth for Durant and Kettering again in math, so we are encouraged that the new materials that we have from Envision in math in the high school will, which will, we're already starting to, to use, will show growth for our students in math as well on this assessment. Blue all over the board again. Our subgroups are doing, doing well and, and showing growth on the SAT. This is encouraging for us because our subgroups are typically the groups that we have the most difficulty moving forward and to see this sort of growth through the materials that we have in place is very encouraging for us. Just to point out the highlights from the data that you just looked at, both middle schools showed growth on the ELA for the PSAT as compared to last year, and the proficiency is moving closer to that state proficiency score. The middle school math scores did show less growth, but with the implementation of the new math materials, we're confident that we will begin to see increases in that area as well. Our subgroup scores in ELA showed growth throughout the grades and our new ELA program includes specific supports for intervention with our subgroups. And we are proud to say that they're proving to be effective. Durant and Kettering schools grew in both math and ELA, and beginning with this school year, 23, 24, our new ELA curriculum will be fully implemented at the high school along with our new programs for many of our classes. We anticipate with great excitement that we will see impact for our students and see advances in achievement in the near future.
Oh, you're welcome.
So again, very reflective of NWA, just kind of affirmed for us. There are some areas where we're really seeing some growth, especially some of those ELA pieces, and there are still areas that we know that need help. And we have now purchased materials for the suite of K12 instruction, and so we should really start with implementation, see some good movement, so.
Member Wagner?
Yes, well, thank you for that. That was incredibly informative and so much data. I'll have to go back through it again, I reread through it a few times. But also, I think it's, it's pretty reflective too of what Dr. Michael Rice said when the state came out and he came out and said, and I think it's important for everyone to know this, that despite the fact that we all want to believe that COVID is over, the state itself did not do as well as they were hoping. And as he stated, we are still in a recovery mode. Our students are still in recovery and this expectation for them to just immediately have bounced back to these high, high achieving scores is, is a little bit not very fair. So I think this is wonderful to see that we have growth, that our students are, are learning and adapting and coming back to where they were. And to see, this is what investments in curriculum do. Because we are now investing the way that we should be in our students and our curriculum, we're seeing it start to pay in dividends. So I think this is incredibly encouraging. I think this is wonderful work on all of your beheads and I'm, I'm excited to see what will happen, you know, when we see middle school and high school, but I also think it's important to recognize that, you know, our kids went through a lot and they're doing their best and they are trying and, you know, and they're, they are learning and they are, they are seeing growth, so thank you. Thank you for all your work putting this together. It's, it's very appreciated.
Alex, other comments, questions? Member Sutherland?
You know, I've been reviewing data for 16 years now as a board member and there's always great hope every year, we're doing this, we're doing this, we're trying this, we're doing that, we're doing that, and it always feels like then when we see the data, really, huh, this is frustrating. You know, originally, I'm looking through this data and Waterford as a district, you know, double state went through COVID, yes, but Waterford as a district is below the state average in literally every single grade in every single subject matter with the exception of fifth grade language arts. So I notice now in the summary, it's a summary that I take with me because we never used to be below the state average in anything and we have a lot of ground to pick up for. That being said, another takeaway from all of this is that in almost every case, our district average, there's, I have four or five exceptions depending on continent area, but at least our district average itself went up from where it was last year as a district. Not in every school, not in every continent area, but as a trend, which means we're closing the gap, which means to me, hooray, hooray, yay, yay. You can't, you can't get back up to the state average unless you're increasing at a faster rate than the district, than the state is, and the district is doing that. So when I look at the numbers, there is, there is some good news there. You know, I, I, I know I'm a tough critic and I just think what it is. You know, I, I, I know I'm a tough critic and I just think what it is, but I will say I'm really grateful for the perseverance and for the hard work that our staff, our teachers, every single person in our district has this precision focus on student, student teaching and learning, teaching and learning, and teaching and learning, and teaching and learning. I just want to commend you for that. Thank you for staying the course. Thank you for being dedicated in, in the face of some really difficult challenges and maybe we continue onward and upward.
Joan, if I can, and I, I share your concern, but ever the optimist, I'm going to point out that two years ago, even pre-COVID, it was to the point where even our individual schools were not making the state level. And what I think we're seeing now is that there are some schools that are way back up to where they were.
Yes.
And then there are still some schools struggling and they're not, they're not surprises to us in terms of who they are and, and what we need to do there. But I think we have more schools individually that are surpassing and meeting the state, the state benchmark than we have had in a long time.
I agree.
So I'm, I'm kind of hopeful about that, thinking, okay, now we just need to boost the other schools up and get, get them where they need to be. So.
Hopefully our PLCs are, are sharing and some of those are, are big success stories. You can see a few of those schools that have, have growth that it's, you know, their bar chart is like this.
Exactly.
So, you know, obviously they've, they've, something's caught on fire there and that's a good way, not in a bad way, not in a school way. Something has taken hold.
Right. Yes. So it's not to say that that's the best news, but it is a little encouraging when we see that because it's better than it was a few years ago.
I know, I know. And I, I just, I've been sitting here a long time and.
I know.
I am just, you know, I was really, because we had such good growth, especially at elementary school and our NWEA, I was really hopeful that that would translate, I guess, a little quicker in terms of closing that gap. So, but I do recognize the hard work and I also know we had to, I don't know any other way to say it than this, then we had to dig ourselves out of a hole. And so that's, this is the way we do it. It's, it's one step at a time, it's, you know, and pedaling as fast as we can. So appreciate that. I, I never, I just want to say that we still have a ways to go.
Oh, yes.
And I know, I know, you know, I know we're working on it. So we will, we will persevere. Precision focus. Thank you.
Any comments, your colleagues?
Member Preshashankar. I hate to follow Joan because she's always so positive and, you know, I want to thank the people too. She's over here writing down scribbling stuff. I'm thinking, ah, you got all this. She didn't use any cuss words, which I, I'm still disappointed. It, it is, but we're using a state level, not a county level. Our county is higher than state level. Our neighbors are doing better than we.
Some of them.
Right. But the county is ahead of the state level, countywide. So it's just one of them things where we have to do better. We know that, you've said that. I don't want to beat up a dead horse, but I just want to say that I'm, I'm still not happy. I just, again, I appreciate everything. When my kids do something, I still love them, but when they disappoint, it's like, hey, you can do better. We have to do better. And they're just, again, like you said, I've been here longer. We, we were improving at one point, then just started that little slip slide. And we, we, we have to.
We don't disagree at all.
I know, and I know you don't. So I don't, I don't mean to pick on anyone. I, I believe that people are working hard, but I can't just sit here and say, oh, this is great. Look at, we're improving. Bad word, but thank you.
Member Wagner?
I just again would like to say, this is why we invest in our curriculum. This was unfortunately not happening as much as it should have been for many years in our district. You cannot expect greatness if you don't give people the resources and the tools that they need to do that. We are now doing that. We have been doing that. I know that we are in a bad boat. Our funding is finally where it should be. The state is finally doing the things that they should be for public education. I think it's incredibly important to keep that in mind. I think we need to, to look at our wins where we can take them. I think our district is doing a phenomenal job. Comparison is the root of all evil. Apples to apples, this is not apples to apples. You cannot compare to every district in the county to us. Every district is different in their demographics and their families and, and many things. So I think it's unfair to compare our district consistently to those around us because they have their own challenges as well as we do. And not everyone is doing, doing amazingly well as, as everyone likes to, to believe that they are. We live in a snow pole and it's sometimes hard to, to view things outside of your snow pole. But as a parent in this district with kids still in this district, who has gone through this district for the past, I don't know, over a decade and have seen the ebbs and flows of how things have been supported or how things have been funded and to see where we are at now to where we were even five years ago, I am so incredibly grateful and encouraged. And I just want everyone to leave with a positive image of our district and not view us as still being anything other than what we are, which is amazing. And our staff is amazing and our families are amazing. So I just feel that that's important to share.
Could, I, I know we're so familiar with what we've done at sort of elementary level these last couple of years. Could you give us a quick reminder and summary of what we're doing at middle and at high school? Because I know those, we had such a focus on our elementary, there was a, you know, we did a this and we threw a lot of money and made a lot of investments, but the sort of middle school and high school investments have come together, or it's come to us a little bit more slowly. So I'd love to hear a kind of summary of what.
I'll start with middle school. We, we piloted a new math program last year, two different programs and we overwhelmingly, they chose the program that is affiliated with the, the K5 program now. So that will be, that implementation has started this year. We invested in DreamBox for, to replace the older program that it's much more engaging. It gives students immediate feedback and it's, it's just, it, it's taken off already very, very well. And I'm missing some of the other investment.
HMH.
No, I'm sorry, HMH Into Literature as well. We are in our second year of implementation there. And we are this year doing Lexia Power Up for all students, much like we do Lexia in K5. Because we're, we're seeing those holes in places where it's just very difficult for a teacher to meet and fill all of the needs from mislearning over time, whether it's COVID or before. The other piece that I, I don't want to forget about tonight is that this board's investment in, in our, in our teachers recently this summer, it was pretty defeating interviewing over and over and over and not being able to retain teachers. So we had well over a hundred new teachers last year. We have just, just under a hundred this year. If we can stabilize our, our teachers, all of the investments that we're putting into them and training along with our materials, that's, that cannot be underestimated just having that steady. So.
And we also, we also this year have launched teaming at a middle school level last year.
And at the high school level, similar to K8, we've had great investments in resources. We know that a strong viable curriculum is important to being prepared to see achievement in our students. So with your investment in our, in our schools, we have the new HMH curriculum that's fully implemented through all grades for language arts. We also have Envision curriculum materials that are in place for this year. We're very excited about that. But in addition to making sure that we have those resources to supplement our curriculum, we're making investments in our human resources and making sure, not only the financial investment, but making sure that they're able to deliver effective lessons by providing professional learning to them and how to best deliver instruction. An example would be with what we're doing in science. After we adopted the next generation science standards, it required that teachers teach in a new way. So we're, we've been investing time in bringing in consultants to show our teachers, how do we teach in a new way? And I think we're going to, the students are going to realize some great things and our teachers are going to be able to be more impactful with their students since they'll have some new, more effective strategies to use with our students. So I'm looking forward to being an integral part of making sure that teachers have the most up-to-date strategies that they can use so that what we're delivering to students is going to be enduring and students will walk away from their classes with the knowledge, skills and understandings that they need to be able to demonstrate on an assessment or in life.
One thing to add to that is, and across the board, K-12 is also we have our generous, you agree to our investment in one-to-one. So without one-to-one, we wouldn't have our Alexia or our Power Up or our DreamBox as well as it provides an opportunity for students to take assessments on their computer and get used to an M step or an SAT, which College Board is moving to digital this year as well. So that opportunity was also.
That recouped time back in there because it used to take, you know, three, four weeks during an assessment window to give the NWEA and to do the state assessments. So a lot of that time is recouped back in the classroom because they can take that individually on their device.
And the last thing I think we've done, what I think we've implemented this year and Yvonne has hit the ground running with these folks, our teacher leaders at the high school, because they are in-house and they can help teachers who are struggling with the implementation of new curriculum. So it's job embedded professional development. So I do think that that's going to make a huge difference for them as well.
And you saw the team for Camp WSD.
Oh, yeah.
They are.
Powerhouse.
They really are amazing team and there is no other team I would put in the county that, that could stack up against them. Going to county meetings, I can tell you that districts have not made the same shifts that, that we have made recently. And it's going to start standing out.
Mr. Lieutenant, could you talk again, why having the NWEA and M-step sort of track in this is so important?
Well, as, as Elizabeth said, the M-step is a big picture summative assessment. It doesn't give us a ton of information other than here's how your kids did. Here's the standards, here's how they did. What the NWEA does in, as it's reflective, or as the M-step is reflective of it, is it gives us those steps along the way. So it says in the fall, Johnny did this well, he still needs help here. So a teacher can actually pull a report of the five students in class who still need to work on this standard that is tested on the M-step and that is part of the curriculum. And they can pull that small group and say, okay, we're going to work on this until we get it, until we master it. While the other kids can be working on something individualized for them because they can't all be doing the same thing at the same time. So it targets our instruction towards specific standards that kids need to be successful. If there was no correlation, we could just be grasping at straws and, and teaching what we think is the right thing to teach. But instead, students are setting goals, they are moving towards standards. So that correlation is extremely important if you ultimately want to see the M-step scores go up.
And when you layer on DreamBox, Amira, Lexia, and Power Up, that, that gives teachers daily information that can target very specific skills that are missing. So it's, we keep drilling down further to really be targeted.
Yeah. The other piece that helps by having them mirror each other is because we give NWEA intervals throughout the year. Where M-step, like we shared, was held in the spring, we just now are sharing the data. So, and it doesn't give us more than did they hit target or not. So that NWEA, like Lisa shared, really allows us to dig in those three times a year and gets us moving that growth.
Part of what I'm hearing you say is, so having these multi, multiple forms of measurement. So tonight when I was looking at my son's NWEA score, I said, however, sticks with this path, you can anticipate this, this outcome on the M-step. And that is in fact, according to what we have here, true. And what that's telling parents is that while that sort of end goal, you know, the sort of benchmark, you might not be there yet, that, that line of growth is predictable. There's a correlation to what we're seeing at that NWEA data, the M-step outcome. And that tells us that the systems, well, maybe we're not there in terms of the benchmarks yet, they're working. And that's, again, if the foundational understanding of assessment is multiple forms of measurement to investigate the relationship between those, those forms of data.
And they're not just working, they're working on the right things to make progress. That's, that's key. And I think that the, I think that what Ms. Dixon indicated with the high school, we used to do NW at the high school years ago and it became so cumbersome with having so few computers that it was taking weeks to get through and it just wasn't giving us information as quickly. And it was far more difficult and cumbersome. But the responses from the high school principals has been, oh, it's been easy, easy. They all do it on their, their Chromebook, it's done, no scheduling every ELA class over the course of three weeks into the computer lab and hoping they finish in that amount of time and then doing makeups. There's none of that, so.
Thank you. Senator.
I just wanted to circle back and I appreciate, you know, all the, the work that is going on. I think it's obvious when we look at the data, we have some concerns at the middle school level. Pretty, even if we compare from last year to this year, which, you know, is, we, we were, we were down five percentage points, sixth grade language arts. We were down, we were up one for sixth grade math. We were down three year over year for seventh grade language arts. And then we were down 10 as a district for seventh grade math. Those are, those are some, that's some pretty significant. That is not an upward trend, you know, I guess, unlike, unlike what we're seeing in, in most of our other areas. What, what are we specifically targeting relative to that?
Well, remember, we have purchased HMH, but we purchased it after the elementary. So they've had, had, this test was given in April. So they hadn't even quite had a full year of full implementation at that point. So now we've got that going on, we've got Power Up for them, we've got DreamBox for them, we are just now implementing the new PATH program at the middle school. They were in a pilot phase, they're now being implement, they're now implementing full implementation this year. So those are curricular changes that we had not had in place for middle school before, but now are in place for them, that we had in place for elementary.
But they were in place for 2020, for the, for almost a full year, but we lost ground with those things being in place.
But remember, you're dealing with middle school and so they had.
Just, was it growing pains? Is that just?
No, I, I, you know, I don't want to give that a free pass on that. But when you get to middle school and you have had years of elementary with a program that may not have been what we have now, it takes longer to catch those kids up because they've had more years of it than someone who's in third grade who started two years ago with the new program and the new science of reading and all of those and the, the way of teaching math that is concept based. So it's going to take longer for kids who have been taught a different way to catch up with the new way, if that makes sense.
Joan. It's just that we lost ground year over year. I mean, from the point that we had it, from the point that we didn't have it to the point that we did have it, we actually lost ground.
Member Sutherland, I would just like to highlight on the PSAT suite, if you take a look at the PSAT eight for language arts, this is more encouraging for the eighth grade students. You'll notice that Pierce actually exceeded the state in language arts and Mason also showed some improvement there for language arts.
Yep. I, I agree. I agree. I was looking at seventh grade and all the data relative to seventh grade, recognizing that when they started in sixth grade, they didn't have the, necessarily the new curriculum. And when they started seventh grade, they did, and we actually lost ground. So just, just hopeful that we're, that we're doing the right things to ensure that our kids are engaged because those are some really significant, it's a downward trend and not an upward trend with new investment in place. So I'm just hopeful that, I understand what you're saying. That does make sense. They came from a different environment. So I just want to make sure that we don't leave anybody behind. Yeah. So, thank you.
So again, I think it's, I think it's a mark of a, of really productive relationships between the board and sort of central admin team. We can have these conversations and ask tough questions and get really great answers. And even, again, while sometimes there sort of may appear to be a sort of difference of opinion in kind, oftentimes what these are is a kind of matter of emphasis and no board member will say that high expectations aren't a good thing, a central value of any, of any board of education. And I know all of us up here hold those. And we are always just, you know, I always, one thing I've learned during my service on the board is that board members are impatient and have short memories. And, and I think that's the case and I think actually it's, it can be a strength because that's what we do. We want the best for our district and we're also willing to make sure that we can do that. And we're also willing to make sure that we can do the best to support that good work. So Alex, any other comments or questions? Yeah, number seven.
Rowan, my two cents. I think it looks good, I think we're getting there. The full year of HMH, you can see that through elementary school. Sixth grade, I mean, we've had this discussion before, I don't even think we should test in sixth grade, it's hard, you know.
Could you tell the state that?
You know, it is, he told us we needed to talk to the microphone. Sixth grade is hard, you know, you just spent six years with all the same kids in all the same hallways. And now you're going to merge nine, we have nine elementary schools, right, into two separate, you know, schools. And I know I struggled because when I went to Mott, every one of my friends went to Kettering, all of them. I had a bunch of acquaintances and people that, like, I did not know people at Mott, but my close, close friends went to Kettering, and it's hard. It's hard to be in that situation. You don't get a recess, you don't get an outlet, you know, classes are different. You don't really get to color anymore, you know what I mean? It's a huge adjustment. Not to mention you get the whole puberty thing, you know, and everything going on. I have every confidence in all of you that next year, this is going to look very, very different. And I know that in my heart, and like I told Scott in our conversation, next year is my last year on the school board, and I intend to go out with a bang. So I have every confidence that these are going to be what we want them to be. And you know what, if we're upset about anything, I think the thing, one thing that makes me most upset is that our state is so low. Our state is, like, we're competing in the 30th percentile in the state of Michigan, I mean. So, but great job to all of you. I have every confidence in all of you that this is, you might bring tears to my eyes next year, so. Because this was one of my bucket lists, my school district bucket list things, so.
We're working on that.
I think we're going to be okay.
We're working on a bang.
I think we're going to be okay.
Yep.
Thank you, colleagues, thank you, everyone, thank you, thank you. All right, we are going to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Elka to talk about some asbestos over at Stepansky.
I am being joined by Carla Ramirez. She is the project oversight manager for Bart Mallow, who oversees our projects. So if I can't answer one of your questions, she should be able to. So as you said, we're starting with Stepansky abatement bid. So part of dismantling a building involves removing any hazardous materials that, like asbestos, that are present in the walls, floors, or exterior areas like roofing. These materials are safe, why they're contained, and they pose no danger to the people in the buildings. Our district, like many, has a vendor who regularly tests that these materials are safely contained across the district. That vendor, Nova Environmental, also prepares the bid documents for the abatement bid and will oversee the bid process, or the removal process for the materials. We have a recommendation for this bid to be presented for action at the next board meeting, October 19th, and the funds are from the 2020 bond. Are there any questions?
Alex, comments, questions about the asbestos state? Number Patricia.
Is this who we normally use for, we've used in our previous buildings?
Nova Environmental? Yes, we have used them for years. Many, many districts use them because they are very good at doing all the testing that's required every year in our buildings to make sure that asbestos is contained. If we have any questions about anything, we pull them in to go ahead and do testing. So, and they also have overseen all of our abatement work that we've done.
The three of them are similar in price, one of them is just over the moon. Is it, they just grow up crazy, they just hope of getting something? Or are they seeing something that the other three didn't?
Well, that's part of the process. Those bids opened, I believe, when, when did we say they opened? In August, so that is part of the recommendation that we do is look at the references, look at what they presented, making sure that they're reasonable. Like you said, did they see something that we didn't, or did they just had-
Were we going to, you know, take out the road on both sides or something? That's, so you can look at it and say, geez, do we need to do that?
So normally what you do on a bid is you usually start at the lowest bidder and then take a look at them and make sure they meet all the requirements. And if they don't, then you go to the next lowest bidder. But if the first lowest bidder meets all the requirements, meaning that you have a good history with them, they have a good reputation, they have no issues with any bids they've done before, then you'd go with them. So qualified abatement, or, excuse me, Quality Environmental has done some of our abatements before. And so we have a good track record with them. We still rely on Nova to do all of that vetting process that they would normally do to make sure there's still a good vendor that we'd want to use.
Sutherland, can you move the microphone a little closer to the audience, but we said we can't hear you.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
We didn't even look at the $446,000, look at the moving roadway.
We probably looked at it just to see if there was something obvious missing.
That's what I'm just looking at.
Yeah, but, like I said, when you're looking at the base one, that's the one you focus on. But you would probably glance at the one that was the highest just to make sure that there was nothing that you would have missed in your bid documents.
Thank you.
Well, it's on green, so maybe I just need to talk louder. Okay, I'll swallow it.
Thank you, number Patricia, any other comments, questions? Okay, excellent. Thank you so much, and I think we're going to keep you up here to talk about the Stepansky dismantling.
So part of, obviously, the whole process that we had for Stepansky was to dismantle the building once the other building got further along. So we are really close to finishing the new building. So at this point, we're looking at, obviously, the abatement bid that goes with a demolition bid and as well as the dismantling bid. So part of this is we will be able to move students into the new building after spring break. That allows us to get started on the dismantling of the old building sooner, which allows us to go ahead and have time to finish the parking lot once the building is gone. So this April timeline is allowing us to be able to do this. We were really concerned because the parking lot does take a lot of work when you're doing a brand-new parking lot and you're not just renovating what has already been done. So the bids are due on September 21st, which was today. So we got some bids in. We have not, obviously, begun the vetting process, that'll begin next week. And we'll make a recommendation at the October 19th bid. And again, these are, this bid would be funded from the 2020 bond.
We won't see the bid at the next meeting?
Oh, yes, you would, yes.
It would be information-
Yes.
Probably voting on it.
Exactly, yes.
Because I'm guessing that it's also going to be a very large number.
We did see the bids, they were actually very good, we were very happy with the bids.
Will we have an opportunity, because the school's been there a long time. It was my elementary, and I've had people wanting to know if there's going to be a Williams Lake that you get to go through there. Or, you know, at Arthur Village, we had a company that come in and sold off different things, auction-type stuff, that's in the township. And we hope that we do something like that.
We have started, a group of us, from maintenance, from the business office, from Bart Mallow, were meeting to discuss what kind of things that we would be able to reuse from the building and move to other buildings, what items we want to recycle and use in other buildings from, like, mechanical purposes, not just furniture. And then what items we think will do well at auction, and then what items we would just throw away. A lot of things that we could throw away, we can include with the bid where they would take it. A lot of times you say 10% of what you're actually going to move, take away as debris will be furniture or fixtures or things like that, and that's perfectly acceptable. So that's one thing that we're going to be doing the next six months is making sure that anything we need in that building for other district purposes is used, so. Thank you, I can actually hear that now, so.
Number Southern.
Relative to, kind of, the two things are tied together, so I don't mean to go back in time, but I wasn't sure what the timing was for the abatement. And I'm assuming since we're using Nova Environmental, that they are comfortable, given that you're talking about doing spring of 2024 to bring the building down, abatement will need to be done prior to that, that means kids will be in school, is-
Okay, so you are correct that we'll be doing the abatement when, after we've moved the kids to the new building. However, a big part of, and a very important part of, abatement in itself, let alone construction, is safe removal of the abatement. So, yeah, it is-
That's why you have to pay so much.
Exactly, when you've seen it in a building and you see how they do it and they do it really well, it is very impressive. So yes, they will be doing it very carefully. And not all of the building will need to be abated, which is nice. So basically, we have that, as soon as we have our students that are at Stepansky that are in the GSRP program, Head Start, tuition-based moveover, which will be on April 8th, we will then start the abatement and dismantling of the other building. So the abatement, they work very closely together to determine what needs to be abated. So the people that are doing the dismantling can work in a different part of the building. So we have, the abatement is going to be scheduled from April 8th to April 19th. The dismantling is going to be from April 8th to June 15th. It will take a lot longer to obviously take the whole building down than just the abatement pieces. And we have been very upfront with Nova, the bids have included this information so they understand the timeline that we're trying to work with. And part of this timeline also was determined by whether we could move into Stepansky, whether we could get the licensing, so we've been working with those agencies as well so that we believe that, yes, we will have the licensing ready and we'll have the furniture moved. So these are a lot of moving parts that we've been working with, but we believe that the timeline we have in place will be working.
I just, I have to put my trust in Nova Environmental that it is safe to do abatement with children in the same vicinity because we've never actually done that before. And I just, honestly, I would just feel more comfortable if it was on a weekend, if they just did it on a weekend or during spring break or sometime, because it just feels, it doesn't feel right, but.
Well, I can tell you, having done this at a prior district, I could walk in the building that was being abated, but I would not be able to walk in any area that was being abated because they actually have it completely closed off.
Plastic.
Plastic, I think it's called negative atmosphere, negative air. So, you know, they come in in complete suits, I've been in there when it is. There was no concern about this, and like I said, it's the building next to it, they are very careful. They did it with Village, they've done it with a lot of our buildings with the projects they have. We have abatement, like, in the flooring, so they come in and do it. It's very safe because they can't allow any of those fibers to get out of that containment. So, and that's what Nova makes sure, is that the vendor is doing all of this correctly. So that's why we are not concerned about it. But obviously, we wouldn't want to be doing it in the same building, but having it in a safe building next door, we are very confident about this.
Thank you.
Alex, other comments, questions?
That was a grammar question, by the way.
Okay, thank you. Security system, or security camera system, and Assistant Superintendent Elka, you're still up.
So part of the security assessment that was done last year had a recommendation for more cameras in our buildings. Supply chain issues prevented us from getting all the cameras that we had really wanted to put in that were part of that assessment. And the last year, we have put together the recommended or requested cameras, but we've also included extra cameras. And some of these are things like hallways that don't have, like, maybe only have one camera at one end, we're putting at the other, exterior doors, playground areas that just don't have enough camera coverage. So those are some of the things that we sort of worked over this last year, realizing that we were not going to be able to get all the cameras we needed anyways. We decided we're going to be a little bit more thorough, put a bid together and be able to get some pricing. This bid is put in such a way that we would be able to get extra cameras and we'd have a unit price. So if we decide, oh, we only thought we needed four in here, we need five, we'll be able to go ahead and do that. So during this process, while we were working on putting the cameras, one of the things we do use, obviously, is servers, that's where the video is kept. And working with technology, we realized we were at end-of-life for these servers. So the bid also included servers, those are expensive, unfortunately. But luckily, we do have dedicated money from the state for security purchases that would be able to cover that. So that was another reason to go ahead and do a bid, where we could have done the cameras purchases by building and not have an issue. The servers, I want to say, were almost $30,000. So we had to do a bid, we might as well do the camera, we cover ourselves, we have unit pricing that we'll be able to use for a couple of years, while we still have the special funding. So the bids are due September 28th. We'll bring the recommendation for that at the October 19th meeting. And we have this money from the state security grant. So we did receive money last year for security, which we've been using for a variety of purposes. And they allowed us to carry over that money for this year. They gave us more money, which was equal to the amount for this year, which we can carry up for one more year. So we have time to buy these cameras, get them in place, and have that dedicated source.
Is that time for all of our buildings?
For all of our buildings, yes.
Alex, comments, questions, number seven?
Just, can you help me, what is the Section 97 flat?
So that is what they call the one without a letter. So we have 97D, 97B, 97C, and then they called it 97 flat. Never heard of that, but that's how they've been differentiated it from the other subsections. So 97 is just the basic security money that we receive, we received about $800,000. There is 97B, which allowed schools that didn't have an SRO to fund it. 97C was allowing us to do a, the critical maps that we'd want at all of our schools that allow our first responders to see the outline of the interior and outside of our school. And then D was to pay for our assessment. So they are the ones that use that, that wording. We've never, I've never heard it before, but I want to be consistent so that we make sure we're using the right funding.
I appreciate it, you know, thank you.
Other comments, questions, your comments regarding the security camera system? Okay, Mott High School site improvements.
Okay, so the student parking lot and the bus drop-off loop were last renovated in approximately 2005. The north side of the parking lot was renovated in 2015. This bid includes the student area, the bus drop-off loop, and the west lot, which I think it's calling a lot is a little bit of a stretch, but it's the part that is actually behind the building to the west side. So it's where if you were getting into the building from behind, that's where you park, our maintenance guys park there, a lot of our athletic coaches do. An alternate, or, excuse me, a new gate will be installed in the west lot to prevent traffic and parking in this area. This has been a consistent problem, especially during games, where we have other people coming in and parking that, where we need it for our refs and things like that. An alternate was included in the bid for the renovation of part of the east lot. There is a section that could use some work on it. However, it is an alternate, so if the pricing is not attractive, we do not have to do it. It's just, we would like to do it now if we can. And this is the time we will be doing it, why we have a vendor on site already doing parking lot renovations, it's a good time to do it at this time. We would not just go ahead and do it just by itself. A recommendation, or, excuse me, the bids are due on September 27th. A recommendation will come for the bid, or, excuse me, for the board to look at at October 19th. And the funds are from the 2020 bond as well.
Number White.
I have one question. So in the parking lot, would that also include some of the sidewalks that are over on that side that are crumbling and some of that cement area?
Yes.
Okay, so all of that would be also included in that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I think on the map I gave you, I talked about it a little bit in the FAQs, there's a section that's on the south side where that's our special ed students usually enter through there. And we've had requests that if there could be a little bit more parking there, because normally they have to park in the student lot, then walk across where the buses come in, it's becoming a potential safety hazard. So we talked about different options, and talking to Craig Bloom Chris, the principal over there, this was one of the suggestions that came out, it's just a few parking spots so parents could come in, do a drop-off, the kids could be there, they wouldn't have to pass over where the buses are.
You mentioned a map, was that part of the email?
Yeah, that was part of the email.
I didn't, I didn't print it out, because I'm having a hard time picturing this new lot and the new drive that's included in this. Is it possible to-
I will make sure you get one.
Maybe with the, when we see the bids, if we could have that included, that would be super helpful, so we can all visualize.
Yeah, it's, we were, you know, tried to present this in a way that you can see, I think this map did a really good job. You just have to sort of look at where the hatch, crosshatching is because there is a little bit of shading too that may look like we're doing something when we're not. But they did a really good job of showing the different areas, so. And the nice thing about this is you can really blow it up, that's what I actually do a lot of this. I will blow up certain areas so I can read some of the information that they're presenting on it, so.
It's over where the auto shop used to be, right?
Yes.
At the end of the hallway?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Alex, other questions about the Mott parking lot? Okay, excellent. Mott High School improvements. Okay, excellent. Mott High School improvements.
Okay, so the last one we were talking about is additional bid that we put out there. This includes part of the renovations for the building interior finishes. I apologize, I saw on the thing it said finished. And that's a typo for me. It's finishes. So these include doors, lighting, ceilings, bathroom upgrades and remodeling, wall moldings like we had seen on our tour, and then wall coverings in various parts of the building. The maps provided, there's 22, just so you can see all of the work that's going on and you can see where we're talking about as well. And again, you know, we can share that again so that you have all of that detail. But I thought they did a really good job of trying to show what we're doing because it's a very large area and we're doing a lot of work to various different areas. So I wanted to note that this is in addition to the other work that we're already doing. And that is what the first three bullet points on the info item are the things that we are already doing. So I just wanted to restate that. We have still a lot going on in Mottlet next year with classroom renovations, with the art room renovations, corridor updates and things like that. This is in addition to that work. The bids are due October 9th, and then we'll bring a recommendation to the board at October 19th. The funds are from the 2020 bond, and we did have money funded for these finishes. We knew we had a lot of updates, such as the doors and things like that. So we already had money in the bond set aside for this project. We are going to try to do things during the year as much as possible because this is a lot of work, especially with the bathrooms. So we're working with the principal over there as well as Bart Mallow, Allison Satoris, our athletic director, to make sure that we're getting this all done and everybody's aware of any issues with scheduling.
Comments or questions, colleagues? Member Southern.
I know maybe about two years ago, we did quite a bit of work at Kettering relative to the cafeteria and the kitchen and the coffee bar. And at that time, we were looking at possibly doing something for Mott. First of all, I'm thrilled to see all of this. Thank you. And thank you to our community who makes this all possible. I'm just wondering if there was any thought to having those be part of this particular phase or if that is even planned. It's been a while since I've, I know that, since we've looked at the list. And I know sometimes priorities change. And I'm just wondering if that was a part of.
So what we decided to do instead of actually building something that we may not actually have room for, we are looking at for a future project, the floor and seeing if we can level it out. We are still investigating that. We have a few options, but we haven't had a chance to get far enough in to investigate them. But we do have a few options and we will price them out. So that's one thing that's still on the horizon that we haven't given up on. The other thing is what we decided to do instead of having a dedicated physical space was to bring in machines. So they have coffee, they have soft serve, they have a bunch of these options. So it's not quite like they're not getting the same options that our Kettering students are.
So we did put things like that. They're already in?
Correct, but they're just mobile. So they're, they're not physically in there. But we have the machines. We purchased them. They've been doing those things.
And you mentioned the first three bullets we're already doing?
Those are already on. They've already been approved by the board. And they're already on either for this, for this school year or next summer. So I just wanted you to be aware that when we're talking about the building finishes, that's not the only thing we have going on there. We already have a lot of things that you've already approved that are going along with this building. So, you know, we're already looking at the auxiliary gym. We are already looking at the classroom remodels and doing different things with them, such as the art rooms. So we have a lot of things that are already in the fix. One of the things we had talked about with the art rooms is we were planning on doing some of this last or this summer, but we didn't get the HVAC units that we needed. And when we investigated whether we could go do the remodeling without that, we were, we were told that we would still have to take the ceiling down. So we basically would not save any money by trying to get the remodeling done before those units were available to put on the roof. So unfortunately, that got pushed to next year. But again, you've already approved it. It's still on the go, and we're managing to do all of these together.
So the, there's an LGI room that's going to be?
Yes.
We're converting something into, because I know Mott's never had an LGI room.
They actually do. It's just not a-
It's not as, right.
It's not a great room. And that's, my understanding is that's why many people do not like using it. So we're making it into a more usable space that people will want to use.
Okay, okay. And that's part, so the first three bullets that are here, it's the verbiage in the first paragraph that we'll actually be approving?
Correct. Well, that talks about it all, all the stuff. The last bullet on the list is what you'll be approving for the bid. That's what's included in the bid.
So just the building finished?
The doors, the lighting.
The bathrooms?
I'm sorry, the bathroom should be part of that. I apologize.
Okay, I just, I was excited to see the changes when we were there and to hear about the upcoming changes. Just wanting, I didn't remember the bathrooms. Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
And I just wanted, I know we talked briefly about it last Thursday, but for those following along at home, we went on a tour with our township counterparts, township trustees and supervisor, Harry Wall, to Mott, Stepansky, and Kettering. And we're able to see some of the amazing work that the district and our partners have done. And to see them, you know, we talk about them in the abstract here, but to see them and how amazing our gyms look and classrooms look, just, it was a wonderful experience and really brought to, brought to light the importance of these investments. So I just got to go and pass them off a little bit.
All right. Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
All right. I hope Secretary Jocelyn's ready. Because it's new business. And we're going to go, move on to our resolution for National Principals Month. Secretary Jocelyn, take it away.
Superintendent's Recommendation 22-23-24 National Principals Month Resolution. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following resolution in recognition and support of National Principals Month, October 2023. Whereas October 2023 is declared National Principals Month in coordination with the efforts of the National Association of Elementary School Principals, the American Federation of School Administrators, and the National Association of Secondary School Principals, working with the U.S. Congress to designate National Principals Month and resolutions thereof. Whereas the vision, dedication, and determination of a principal provides the mobilizing force behind any school reform effort. Whereas principals are expected to be educational visionaries, instructional leaders, assessment experts, disciplinarians, community builders, public relations experts, budget analysts, facility managers, special programs administrators, and guardians of various legal, contractual, and policy mandates and initiatives, as well as being entrusted with the education and development of young people, the most valuable resource. Whereas principals set the academic tone for their schools and work collaboratively with teachers to develop and maintain high curriculum standards, develop mission statements, and set performance goals and objectives for schools to achieve educational excellence. Whereas to honor and recognize the contribution of all school principals and assistant principals at all grade levels to the success of students in Waterford School District, and to encourage residents to observe National Principals Month with appropriate ceremonies and activities that promote awareness of school leader, of school leadership's role in ensuring that every child has access to a high-quality education. Be it resolved in honor of the service of all elementary, middle, and high school principals, and to recognize the importance of their school leadership so that every child has access to a high-quality education. And to celebrate school leader accomplishments, the month of October 2023 is hereby recognized as National Principals Month. I so move.
Support.
Thank you, colleagues. The motion has been moved and supported. Comments or questions?
Oh, come on. This is such a great one. We have two, I think, amazing resolutions before us tonight. And, and we all know, we have, we have extraordinary leaders in our district, extraordinary staff members, extraordinary teachers. Our principals set the tone in their buildings and create little communities for the families and most especially the children that go there, students that go there. We are incredibly, incredibly grateful for their, for these instructional leaders, for these visionaries, for these, for their, for their kindness and compassion and dedication to their staff and to their students and to the families that they serve. And, you know, every day should be principal day, every day should be bus driver day, every day should be, you know, we should all be thanking them always, teachers as well. But nice to have this separate, when you read all those words and you, and it's all true, like all of that, they've got to juggle all of this, you know. And then also make sure that, you know, the crying child in the hallway, you know, has someone to make sure that gives him a big hug. So anyway, I, we commend our extraordinary principals for the leadership that they provide to our, to our school community.
All those, remember Patricia?
Who's going to follow that?
I know.
Try to start with that. That's why everyone looks at her.
Yeah.
My pleasure.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you, colleagues, and thank you to our amazing team of principals. All right, Secretary Jocelyn.
Superintendent's Recommendation 23-23-24 National School Bus Safety Week Resolution. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following resolution in recognition and support of School Bus Safety Week, October 16th through the 20th, 2023. Whereas the Waterford Board of Education recognizes that the importance of protecting the safety of Waterford's schoolchildren extends beyond the classroom walls and the school building. And whereas the Board has great respect for the accomplishments of school bus drivers, mechanics, supervisors, and all school transportation personnel in providing the safest transportation possible for children to and from school and home. And whereas coordinating the countless routes over so many miles and supervising the dozens of students on each vehicle requires an outstanding effort put forth by these exemplary professionals who have devoted their careers to transporting our children safely. And whereas the Board continues to recognize and to take great pleasure in commending the men and women who accept and meet the challenge of school transportation. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the week of October 16th through 20th, 2023 is recognized as National School Bus Safety Week, and be it further resolved that this week be devoted to the recognition of everyone who contributes to the successful operation of our nation's school buses. And be it finally resolved that this special week serve as fitting time to urge all Waterford drivers to become more aware of school bus safety regulations and encourage all citizens to be alert and drive carefully near school buses. I so move.
Support.
Thank you. Motion's been moved and supported. Colleagues, comments or questions? Member Wagner.
Well, as we have one of our most famous rock star bus drivers in the audience, I think that they, we have such an amazing group of drivers. And our transportation team is phenomenal, and we should be grateful to them every day. So thank you. Thank you especially to Lynette. And thank you so much to all of our drivers. I think, as Joan said, it's too bad we can't do this every single week for every single group because you should consistently be acknowledged and appreciated. So thank you.
Lynette, how many miles does our fleet go every day? You told us that the tour-
Austin, Texas and back.
How many miles every day does our fleet drive?
Wasn't it like 80 some thousand or?
Yeah, to Austin, Texas.
It was to Austin, Texas and back, I think.
Yeah.
As I, I was.
Well, regardless, I mean, just, I think that that's a great way to sort of represent the scope of our amazing bus drivers' work.
That's per day, not per year.
Yeah, that's per day.
And so think about our youngest, our students, as the last resolution said, our most valuable resource. They're on our buses and our drivers keep them safe, keep them entertained with a song possibly. Game.
Yeah, some days are better than others.
Big shout out to our bus drivers. And all you drivers out there, slow down, stop when you see those signs.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, bus drivers. All right. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Motion carries five zero. All right. Thank you, colleagues. Secretary Jocelyn.
Superintendent's Recommendation 24-23-24 Policy Updates, Volume 35, Number 1 and 2 and Edgar. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the proposed revisions to Policy Updates, Volume 35, Number 1 and 2 and Edgar, as presented. I so move.
Support.
Thank you. The motion has been moved and supported. Colleagues, comments or questions regarding our policy updates? Member Southern.
Maybe just for the listening public. First of all, I want to thank my colleagues on the board and the administration for taking the time and our, and our staff members for reviewing. And it can be very tedious work, but it's very important work that we review our policies and that we ensure that legislation that gets passed is incorporated and represented in the policies that we have here as a district so that we're always in compliance. So this board and Neola and our administration has gone through great pains. We periodically review them. That is what this particular action item is about, is to approve the changes that were brought to us and reviewed. So I'd just like to give a shout out to the board and the administration for taking, taking such attention and being so diligent with our policies.
Yeah, I'll second that too. It's, it can be tedious. I mean, it's paying attention, diving in, and our administrative team and our amazing Megan Roberts, who presented that information in a way that was as easy as I think it could be. All right, the next one, the next one. So thank you to Megan and everybody else. All right, colleagues. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Motion carries five zero. Let's give Secretary Jocelyn a break. Treasurer Southern, you're up.
Thank you. Superintendent's Recommendation 25-23-24 Head Start Continuation Budget. It is recommended that the Board of Education adopt the Head Start budget as approved by the Head Start Policy Committee, and I so move.
Support.
Thank you. The motion has been moved and supported. Any comments or questions regarding the Head Start continu-, Head Start Budget? Okay. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Motion carries five zero. Secretary Jocelyn.
Superintendent's Recommendation 26-23-24 Certification of Delegates, MASB Delegate Assembly. The Michigan Association of School Boards, MASB Delegate Assembly, is held annually in conjunction with the MASB Fall Conference. The Delegate Assembly provides direction to the association, and it offers thorough through the adoption of resolutions. All resolutions adopted by the Delegate Assembly become the official position of MASB as interpreted and pursued by the Board of Directors. It is recommended that the Board of Education certify Pat Donahue and Michael Ristich as MASB delegates, representing the Waterford School District Board of Education at the Delegate Assembly. I so move.
Support.
The motion has been moved and supported. Colleagues, any comments or questions regarding the MASB Delegate Assembly? Member Southern.
I was just going to say thank you to both you and Member Donahue for representing us and attending the conference. So thank you.
Same. I was just going to say Waterford is represented with great distinction. We appreciate that.
Yeah, looking forward to it. I look forward to reporting. I'm not sure what will be on discussion items up there, but I'll be eager to report back. Okay. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Motion carries five zero. Secretary Jocelyn.
Superintendent's Recommendation 27-23-24 reinstatement of Student A-23-24. In keeping with Michigan law, a committee consisting of school board members, a school administrator, teacher, and parent of a pupil in the district reviewed a petition for the reinstatement of Student A-23-24, who was previously expelled by the Waterford School District. After reviewing all facts and information in the matter and considering applicable state law, it is recommended by the reinstatement committee that the Board of Education approve the reinstatement of Student A-23-24 with conditions. I so move.
Support.
Thank you. The motion has been moved and supported. Colleagues, comments or questions?
Thank you, Members Sutherland and Patricia for sitting in on this. Privilege, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Motion carries five zero. Secretary Jocelyn.
Superintendent's Recommendation 28-23-24 reinstatement of Student B-23-24. In keeping with Michigan law, a committee consisting of school board members, a school administrator, teacher, and parent of a pupil in the district reviewed a petition for the reinstatement of Student B-23-24, who was previously expelled by the Waterford School District. After reviewing all facts and information in the matter and considering applicable state law, it is recommended by the reinstatement committee that the Board of Education approve the reinstatement of Student B- the reinstatement of student B-23-24 with conditions. I so move.
Support.
Thank you. The motion has been moved and supported. Colleagues, comments or questions?
Thank you to Members Wagner and Donahue for representing the board in that matter. We appreciate it.
Comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Motion carries five zero. Treasurer Sutherland, the consideration of certain purchases, Title 1 decodables.
Thank you. Superintendent's Recommendation 29-23-24. It is recommended that the board approve the purchase of decodable texts from Pioneer Valley in the amount of $65,050 and benchmark education in the amount of $10,650 to create grade-level collections to support our most struggling readers in K through 2. The funding source is Title 1, and I so move.
Support.
Thank you. Motion has been moved and supported. Comments or questions? Very good. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Motion carries five zero. All right, colleagues, that takes us to the end of new business this evening. Thank you so much for your work here. Let's now move on to public comments on non-action items. I do not have any green cards up here currently. Is there anyone who would like to address the board this evening? Okay, very good. Thank you so much. Let's move on now to Board of Education reports. Are there any board reports this evening, colleagues? Start off with Member Jocelyn.
I'm pulling my board packet apart from youth assistance because I do have some stuff. So youth assistance is collecting shoes again. We're already off to a great start. We have 1,800 pair. And we will be collecting them at, there are several sites, I can't, I meant to bring my last board packet that had them listed, but I see that they have a box out front, they have a box at Vibe, they have a box at Crave. I'm sure you've seen them all over the district. You can just bring your shoes in, drop them off. They take shoes, boots, flip flops. I sent my kids old cleats, wrestling shoes, whatever. They, we get money for that and then they ship them off to a third world country and then over there they teach how to sell shoes and different things like that. You can read all about it on the youth assistance website. They're better at explaining it than I am. Calendar of events, September 23rd is the walk and roll with the Senior Center at 8:30. September 23rd is also shoe collection at Christ Lutheran Church from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. They have the harvest happening at Hess Hathaway, October 1st, from 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Then again, on October 7th, they're doing the shoe collection at Russ's Party Store between 10:00 a.m. and 1:00. October 21st is the Battle of the Badges, which I know is usually the biggest one. So it's the police department versus the fire department. So if you prefer one or the other and you want to save up your shoes, you can bring them in and they throw them in a truck and we sit and count all of them to see who won, which is usually a lot and some of them don't smell the greatest. For sure. And then November 4th, they're doing a shoe collection at the Waterford Elks. Waterford Youth Assistance is having their annual meeting luncheon, which I think some of the people here are going to go to. It's on October 10th, between 11:30 and 1:30. Fortunately, I won't be there, but if you'd like to go and you'd like to see, you know, learn more about Waterford Youth Assistance, you can. We're always looking for volunteers. We have the Bucket of Love, which they're going into the schools now. I think they're almost in all of the schools here in Waterford, in the elementary schools. So you get to go and, you know, they kind of pair you with an at-risk kid and you get to hang out with them and read and we have some older people that are doing it and they love it. And then just most recently, a couple of college students have come in to do it, too, to hang out with the kids. And it's a great, you know, it's, you don't have to put in a lot of time. It's not like, you know, the mentoring program, we also have that where you're, you know, we have a specific amount of time where you have to spend with a kid weekly. The Bucket of Love isn't that way and they have all different kinds of things that they do with the kids. So if you want to go and hang out with some little kids because you miss them, I'm almost there. I'm still enjoying my one year of freedom with not having to do school stuff. So I think that's all I have. And please just go to the Waterford Youth Assistance website or their Facebook page. It will give you all of the sites where they're collecting shoes or you can just show up for the Battle of the Badges. That's, that would work out great, too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Member Jocelyn. Any other board reports? Member Wagner.
I just want to remind everyone, we have homecoming games coming up. So Kettering's is Friday, September 29th, which is crazy that it seems so early. And then Mott's is the following week, Friday, October 6th. So it's a great way to come out, support your schools, support our local athletes, kind of see kids from before, see some of maybe the people we graduated with. It was also, I believe, the 50th reunion for class of 73. I know that they recently visited Waterford Mott and did a tour of the building. So it's kind of a fun time as people start to come back in the fall to see their schools and see their buildings. And for those of you that haven't followed, you don't have to be a district, have a student in the district to follow all of our amazing social media. It's a great way to learn about what's happening in the district. I highly recommend it. We're on Instagram, Facebook, we have our podcasts, we're on Twitter, which is now X or whatever it's called. It is a wonderful, wonderful way. It not only just highlights what's going on in the district for those of us that have kids in the district, it highlights our alumni, some of the amazing things that our past graduates are doing. It highlights community events with our partnerships with the township. So it's a great way to get information and to get accurate information about what's happening in the district. So I highly, highly recommend checking out all those amazing avenues to find out information about what's going on.
Thank you, Member Wagner. Any other board reports tonight? Couple of quick things, really quick. First, I wanted to sort of give a quick shout out to Member Patricia who just received from the Waterford Area Chamber of Commerce, a distinction recognizing Patricia and Sons for 40 years of hard work here in Waterford, 40, 40.
Feels like it.
So congratulations to Member Patricia and his family. Quite, it's quite an achievement. Really quick, just wanted to shout out all the amazing folks over at Pierce as the father of two sixth graders. Those, Member Jocelyn was right. Sixth grade is hard.
It's brutal. Brutal.
But shout out to those wonderful Pierce Pirates over there for making that transition I think as easy as it could be. Went to Curriculum Night and, you know, you're there with a lot of families that you've gone to elementary with and other folks you've seen. And I can't tell, I, you know, I have to report to the board here, that all of the positive feedback that I heard and was given on our assessment policies, the fact that students, they have opportunities to learn. If you didn't get it the first time, go study, advocate for yourself, and get it till you learn it. And that's what it's all about. So it was great feedback on our assessment policies. I know I mentioned to a couple of you, but the way our teachers are now utilizing our Google Classroom, we learned so much during COVID and some of those lessons then were sort of learned during a time of crisis have really, have really true, sort of proven to be really wonderful now because you can go in, you can look at everything. My son's Oliver and Damian, what did you do today? This is a great tip from the teachers and we can see it all. And so just wanted to shout out because sixth grade and probably for our ninth graders too, these transition years are big years, but we have amazing staff, administrators who are helping to make those transitions smooth as they can be because they are really, really important. I think that's it for me. All right, Superintendent Lindberg.
Thank you. President Ristich, I have an update on one of the things that we've talked about at the board meeting a couple of times and has to do with Kettering High School and the Ring Road that goes around the school and goes into Van Zant. And so we want to work with our community. What we have come with is that really for the most part in the summer, that road, that gate will be closed and we'll have it open if we have events and those types of things. So summer generally will be closed. On the weekends, we will also be closing that when possible. A lot of times we have activities, certainly not on Friday night, it won't be closed, but if we have activities Saturday or Sunday, that will be open. We've also installed no-through traffic signs and also 10 mile an hour signs. So I wanted to update all of you on that. We are also excited to share that Jeff Jason, Waterford Mott varsity basketball coach, 2003 Mott alumni and Waterford Mason school teacher and coach, has earned a place in the Aquinas College Hall of Fame. So congratulations to Jeff. The Office of School and Community Services has earned five more awards. This group of awards was given by the Michigan Public Relations Association. The MSPRA provides school communication services and training to school leaders throughout the state of Michigan. We look forward to hearing more about these awards and the national awards in October at the full board meeting. Kudos to Sarah Davis and her team. And finally tonight, one of our students highlighted, Waterford Mott senior Megan Riley has been named a commended student for her outstanding performance on a qualifying test of the 2024 National Merit Scholarship Program. This achievement places Megan among the top 50,000 students in the entire nation who took this test. Principal Craig Blomquist and I, along with the administration, presented a letter of commendation to Megan Wednesday afternoon from Waterford Mott High School and the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. Congratulations, Megan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Lindberg. Colleagues, thank you so much for your hard work this evening and to our administrative colleagues, thank you for all that you do and for the start of a great year. Let's keep all the positive momentum going, the future is bright, and seeing no further business tonight's meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.